The Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. And this morning, the invocation will be given by Commissioner Fairchild.
Let's pray. Oh gracious Spirit, come by here again, renew our spirits, share your grace and wisdom with us, guide us as we make decisions for the city, and give us the courage and compassion to lead well. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner-Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the October 16th meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
It's been probably moved in second to approve the minutes from the October 16th meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Okay. Blackshear, do we have any communications or petitions?
There are none, Your Honor.
None. So we have three presentations this morning, is that correct?
That is correct.
So first I'd like to call Ms. Miranda Brooks with the Dayton Mediation Center to the podium to introduce students and teachers visiting from Bosnia and Herzegovina as part of the youth leadership program.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Very well, thank you. Dear Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Ms. Blackshear, thank you for the time this morning. My name is Miranda Brooks. I work for the City of Dayton at the Dayton Mediation Center, Department of Planning, Neighborhoods and Development. I'm the stateside project manager for our Bosnian Youth Leadership Program. It is always a very exciting and special time that we get to welcome our friends from Bosnia and Herzegovina here to Dayton. And today with us, we have an outstanding group, our sixth cohort of 18 students and three teachers from the cities of Livno, Brčko District, and Zenica. The youth leadership program provides opportunities for the students and teachers to further explore ideals of democracy, civic engagement, conflict intervention, management, entrepreneurship, leadership, peace building, and volunteerism, while at times learning alongside Dayton region peers, both students and teachers alike. The program offers the group a chance to sharpen their cultural competency skills and provides room for interpersonal and intercultural growth. One aspect of the program that makes it a true success is the host family experience. We have a phenomenal group of host families this year, some of whom are in the audience, some of whom are city employees, some of whom are on the dais. Thank you. These local host families are very kind and caring, providing unique insights to the students and teachers, offering experiences of U.S. American life. Many city staff help me with this program, way too many to name, but I would like to call out a few to whom I owe special thanks. They include Michelle Zaremba, Stephen Gondal, Lydia Vanderkay, Lamont Hall Jr., Bonnie Kling, and the entire staff at the City of Dayton Mediation Center. This program is funded by the U.S. State Department through a cooperative agreement between the City of Dayton and the U.S. Embassy in Sarajevo. I would like to thank our dear colleagues in Sarajevo for their continued trust and support, guidance, and friendship. And finally, I believe that this type of work truly exemplifies creative and transformative public service, and I want to thank you all for your continued support. The students and teachers are prepared to introduce and say a few things about themselves, which they'll do now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Amir Proštanović, and I'm from Zenica, and I study in a gymnasium school.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Amir Alić, and I also come from Zenica, and I go to grammar school.
Hello, my name is Harry Stalalovich. I'm from Zenica, and I'm going to economy school.
Good morning, my name is Victor Tomić, and I go to nursing school.
Hello, I'm Ilja Unberic from Livno, and I go to grammar school.
Hello, I'm Adna Khadrid from Zenica, and I'm 18 years old, and I'm going to grammar school.
Good morning, my name is Alin Hordić, I'm from Brčko, and I go to grammar school.
Hello, my name is Jana Makivitch, I'm from Zenica, and I go to grammar school.
Hello, I'm Georgij Stjevici from Brčko, and I attend grammar school.
Hello, I'm Eva Puhala, I'm from Livno, and I attend grammar school.
Hello, my name is Aina, I'm from Zenica, and I study natural sciences.
Hello, my name is Helena Penjak, I'm from Livno, and I go to grammar school.
Hello, my name is Anta Minšić, I'm also from Livno, and I go to vocational high school.
Hello, my name is Katarina Tolo, I'm from Livno, and I'm going to med school.
Hello, my name is Magdalena Radić, I'm from Brčko, and I go to grammar school.
Hello, my name is La Gotovac, I'm from Livno, and I'll also go to grammar school.
Good morning, my name is Nikola Kikic, I'm from Brčko, and I'm going to med school.
Good morning, my name is Zoylo Kovac, and I also go to grammar school.
Good morning, my name is Armina Švraka, I am an English teacher. I work in three different schools, technical, vocational, and the first gymnasium or grammar school. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Janya Sutic, I'm from Livno, I'm an English teacher, and I work in vocational high school. Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Ivona Mich, I'm from Brčko District, I'm also an English teacher, and it's great to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Where's, who's the spokesperson? Please come back to the mic.
Ms. Brooks.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so how long are you here?
They are here for three weeks, about two and a half weeks here in Dayton, and then we'll take a trip to New York City where they'll depart for Bosnia.
Okay. All right. I really appreciate you being here. I'm sure my colleagues would like to say a word or two. Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. I just wanted to thank you all for being here, hope you enjoy your stay. If I have the time correctly, you, they should still be in the States during the election, is that right?
That's right.
All right, you get a full grown experience in our democracy. Thank you to the host families, as well as to all of the City of Dayton staff, and to my colleague for your leadership. Thank you, Commissioner Joseph.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Welcome to Dayton, and we have a wonderful city. I hope you get to see some of its natural beauty and some, meet some of our great people that are here, and to learn part about what makes Dayton great, and...
Talking to their backs.
I won't take that personally.
Let's not.
And as Commissioner says, you know, you're here during an important time in our nation, and as we go through our national election to elect the president, you will see us at our best and at our worst, and so I hope that you can take away what's good, and with objective lens, see what, where we're not so good and learn from that. And, you know, one of the things that is really sad for me in this election, I invite you to be observant about it, is the use of dehumanizing language. Because the use of dehumanizing language, when you make someone other, when you make them not human, sets the stage for violence, and it sets the stage for fascism. And so I would encourage you to be on the lookout in the midst of our political debate, who's using that and to what purpose. But welcome, glad you're here.
Very good point.
Very good point, well said.
Mr. Shaw?
Thank you very much. I spoke to you all earlier today, so just welcome, and so glad that you're here. You bring so much to us, and I hope you can just take a little bit away from here. So thank you very much, look forward to talking to you soon.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor. Dobrodošli u Dayton. We're glad you're here, welcome to Dayton. I want to first thank the State Department who's paying for the program. We really appreciate the cooperation with them. It gives not only you all a chance to learn something about being in the U.S. and living in the U.S., it also gives our students here and our families here a chance to meet somebody from another culture and broaden horizons. So everybody wins in this, and I really appreciate the State Department's support. Miranda, you already thanked everybody, so I just want to double thanks, and thank you for your work. It's not an easy thing to bring all these people together, to find host families, to plan the program, but you and your team do an excellent job, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And to you students, we're glad you're here. It's one of the situations where when you know more and you have more experiences, you have a little more responsibility on the, on the other end of it. So we know that you're future leaders in your country, in whatever field you choose to go in, and we look forward to great things from you. And we hope that if there's something that we can do to help, we're here to help. So thank you, we're glad you're here, and enjoy your visit.
Okay. Thank you for that. You know, I'd like to sort of piggyback on a comment that Commissioner Fairchild shared about the aspect of listening to and watching some of the activities and words and actions of the candidates who are running for office. Just a couple of weeks ago, I was able to take about 300 young people in their marching bands and ROTC groups, which is junior military training programs that we have in our high schools, to, to vote for the first time in their lives. And so for about five weeks prior to that, we were registering young people who were just turning 18, so they could vote. It was a tremendous sight for you to see, or for us to see, those young people marching probably about a mile, mile and a half, across the bridge and voting for the first time in their lives. But one of the things I also want to emphasize, again, going back to Commissioner Fairchild's point, is to not just listen to what is being said, but also Google those individuals. It'd be a great, great lesson to Google and listen to what's being said with that type of information, as they have basically kept up with these individuals for four, five, 10, and 15 years prior to them running for an office. And you will see, in many cases, a very stark difference in terms of those individuals who care about people, and who have spent their lives trying to make good things happen for people and improving the quality of their lives, as opposed to individuals who think that politics is a game. And it's a tragic situation here that we have in the United States, unlike, you know, not unlike some of the other nations as well, but how individuals want power more than they want the ability to help other individuals. So again, I really appreciate you being here, and again, as was mentioned, this is a very, very special time for us in the United States. And the aspect of your being here, sharing and listening, and being here, it's just very, very special time, is very special for us as well. So thank you again, and go with blessings, and if you can hang around for a minute, we'll get pictures with all of you once we finish the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're off to another program event, so hopefully it's okay that we will exit now, hopefully with as little disturbance as possible.
Okay, we'll wait before you just leave.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, so now I'd like to invite Ms. Sybil Martin, Executive Director of the Norma J. Ross Memorial Foundation, to the podium to give a community update on the work that's being done by the foundation during Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And as you see, we came prepared for you, wearing our pink, all right?
Good morning.
Good morning to you.
Y'all look wonderful in your pink. So good morning, as you stated, my name is Sybil Martin, I am the Executive Director of the Norma J. Ross Memorial Foundation. Norma J. Ross Memorial Foundation was founded by Janelle Ross, who is the wife of Bob Ross from Bob Ross Auto Group and Mercedes-Benz of Centerville. And we aim to give every woman a fighting chance against breast cancer. So those in underserved communities, those who are uninsured, underinsured, and those who are insured, you'll be surprised how many women have insurance and still don't get mammogram screenings. So we offer mammogram screenings, sometimes one to four times a month, be it mobile unit or at Grandview Hospital. And again, it's open for all women who are age 40 at least and above, who are not presenting with an issue, who are just getting a screening in. So we help them remove all of the barriers that may be presented from them, for them to get a mammogram, whether that's transportation, whether that's insurance, or whether that is just the fear of getting it done. We also work with women who have been diagnosed and are on their journey, we help them financially, because sometimes a lot of women can't get right back to work, so they may need help with feeding their kids, they may need help with the mortgage, and so we're here to help them do that.
Okay. You know, I'm glad you shared the information, especially those extra things that, that the organization does, because I think a lot of times individuals think that you're just raising money to go into research, and, which is very important as well, but not to do some of the follow-up type of situations that you're talking about.
Oh yeah, absolutely. So we do help on the, the research, and we do have a partnership with the American Cancer Society, so we do help on that end, but we also help here locally, because, you know, it's what we see day in and day out, and currently from the 2023 numbers, Montgomery County has a higher incident rate than the state and the nation, and that's per 100,000 women. We're sitting at like 145, the state is at like 130, and the nation is at 128. So we want to do what we can to get ladies in, I mean, and the mortality rates are very similar as well. So we want to get ladies in, if there has to be a diagnosis, we want to be on that early detection end, you know, where treatment is very, very possible, so that's what we aim to do.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martin, for being here. Thank you for providing that additional information, all the great work that you are doing, as well as the leadership with the Ross Auto Group and the Ross entire family. So please let us know how we can continue to provide support.
Well, absolutely. We need the support of everyone in the community, just to even have the conversations, me and the ladies in your lives, you know, ask the question, have you gotten your mammogram? Have you thought about your mammogram? That kind of thing as well. We do have some mammograms coming up on November the 9th. I will leave a brochure out, and I'll also leave some pink bands, but coming up this Friday, we do have sort of a fundraising event. It's gonna be at Coco's, we call it the Pink Out Dance Party. So proceeds from pink drinks will come back to us, and we'll also have some of our merchandise available as well.
Okay. Commissioner Fairchild?
Thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for giving us some concrete steps of how we can support women and help reduce the incidences of breast cancer.
And don't forget, men get breast cancer too.
I know.
So we're here to help.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
I was just about to say that, that the men should also take advantage of that. Thank you, Sybil, for all the work that you continue to do in this space, and thanks also to the Norma Ross Foundation for all of their great work for all of these many, many years since, since she passed. My wife is a survivor of breast cancer, and it's just really important that we keep getting the message out about screening and, and funding this great effort to eradicate breast cancer, so thank you for your work.
And it's beyond October, I always have to say that, it's beyond October, so...
Yes. Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I have to apologize for forgetting to wear pink, shame on me.
I wasn't gonna call you out.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wear pink next week.
There's a little bit in this tie, though, there's a little bit in this tie.
Teeny bit, I had to admit it was an accident, but my apologies in no way signifies that I don't support this, and I really appreciate your efforts. In fact, I wish that the students who were just here were still here, because I was talking to them about how we have many layers, both governmental and non-governmental, that work together for the good of our residents, and this is a perfect example of the work you're doing to look after our residents. So thank you very much, and I do apologize.
No, you're fine, no worries.
Okay. Now, thank you so much, tell Janelle, say hello, and we'll see you on Friday.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You guys have a good day.
I thought you said Friday.
Saturday.
Friday? Okay. So who do Friday and Saturday? Okay. At this point in time, I'd like to invite Mr. Kyle Gephardt, for the program coordinator for the Recreation Department, and to give a community update on our annual fall harvest. Morning, how you doing?
Good morning. So my name's Kyle Gephardt, Recreation Coordinator for the Department of Recreation here with the city. I just wanted to take a few minutes to highlight the Fall Harvest Festival that we have on Saturday, so we will be out at Kettering Field Sports Complex from 2:00 to 6:00. It is a mix between a trunk or treat and a festival, so we'll have resource tables, different departments from the city handing out candy. We just took delivery of 1,300 pounds of candy yesterday, so we have some, some fun activities lined up, hayride, snack walk, costume contest, we'll have some food trucks out there for people to purchase food, but the, the event itself is free, the candy's free, the activity's free, the only thing that would cost is a food truck. So we, we encourage everyone to come out, enjoy the, the good weather, it's supposed to be mid-60s, I think, right now, so, yeah, celebrate the fall season, and get some candy and enjoy some activities.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I know so much who were out there last year, had a great time, and looking forward to it again.
Yep.
Not just for the candy, but just to see the kids, have, see some of the displays that you have as well.
Right.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners?
No.
You all good?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
As the mayor has already alluded to, it's a great event, we actually attended last year, and we're looking forward to attending this year, so thank you to the entire staff.
Yeah, no problem, thank you. And if any, anyone's interested in judging the costume contest, get with me, we are looking for judges, so.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Ms. Dixie, do you have any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, this morning I have no additions or deletions to this morning's calendar. I do have a few items I would like to highlight. First, Purchase Order A1 is the purchase of two more plug-in hybrid sport utility vehicles, so excited about that. Items 2, 3, and 4 are service agreements for demolition, through, two of which are through the Dayton, funded with the Dayton Recovery Plan. The Charles Jurgens is funded with CDBG funding that was complimenting our work with the Dayton Recovery Plan for our five-year program of demolishing almost 1,100 structures. Excited, because this is a $5.3 million investment coming forward with these contracts. The neighborhoods for which structures will be removed are in Old North Dayton, Edgemont, Dayton View, Santa Clara, Twin Towers, Five Oaks, and Roosevelt, as well as Arlington Heights, Burkhart, and North and Southwestwood. So we're excited to bring these investments to the community and get some more structures out of, blinding structures out of our neighborhoods. Item number 11 is another investment brought by the Dayton Recovery Plan, and this is the last of our $10 million investment in sidewalk and curb, and that is happening in the Five Oaks neighborhood. And then items 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 are additional, are, are, is our ongoing work to update our lease agreements with Five Rivers Metro Parks. Earlier in May, we brought the Island Metro Park Agreement forward. These, the work updating these agreements is really just about updating responsibilities, updating the boundaries of use, aligning termination dates, so that we can have some, you know, so that they're not all helter-skelter, right? And, and, and there is, it's easier to administer. They are all for just a dollar lease till 21, 23, so I'm pretty confident none of us will be here to have to do this again. And the reason they're a dollar is because Five River Metro Parks has the full responsibility of maintenance and utilities and real estate taxes, so. And later this year, you will also be receiving, you will be having before you riverscape and Wegerson agreements, and that will wrap up all of this work. And this has been an ongoing work, so I'd like to, for about two years. So I'd like to thank our Law Department and our staff and P&amp;D for all of the work they've done shepherding this through. It had, it was not an easy task, first of all, just making sure that the inventory was accurate and accounted for, and then, you know, defining them in agreements, so. And that's all I have this morning, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
We have one citizen who has registered. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on, you'll have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to seat your comments and to take your seat. To the audience and attendance, please be mindful that this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand-clapping, finger-snapping, and conversations that will prevent the City Commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium Matt Tepper.
Good morning. Matthew Tepper, 702 Troy Street, Dayton, Ohio, 45404.
May begin.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. I hope you'll all be for the objection for the Family Dollar liquor license, but I don't presume on anything about how you're gonna vote individually. We've been through this process a couple of years ago, or a few years ago, and not much has changed. The Old North Dayton Neighborhood Association, being President, is adamantly opposed to the Family Dollar being issued a liquor license. There has not been process in these years. We would hope that they have gotten the message, that they need to be good community partners, and we do not see that. We do have a nu, a number of health and safety concerns that, I could probably spend more than three minutes, I absolutely could spend more than three minutes. With that, the Old North Dayton Neighborhood Association is objecting, and we would hope that you object formally to the issuance of a liquor license to the Family Dollar at 645 Troy Street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sybil.
That is all, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioners, comments on calendar items? Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Dixon, for highlighting the number of items on the calendar this morning. I just, I want to have one question in reference to calendar item number nine. Happy to see this as a means of improving the efficiency of our waste collection, including recycling, bulk waste, whatever have you. Question, does this also provide data in terms of if there are any issues in terms of potholes, whatever have you, any areas that need to be addressed? Would the system itself collect data for our public works to address those?
So you, you may recall Tom Ritchie Jr. highlighted both 7 and 9, because they are data collection systems that are going to help us with routing, that are gonna help us with training, and that are going to be able to track and detect service items like potholes and things, and, and hopefully automatically report, so it comes in as we're doing our work out in the field.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Oh, the one thing I wanted to mention too.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, just, I wanted to make clarification on the calendar for presentations, access to counsel will actually be a part of the work session immediately after the commission meeting, so thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fairchild?
No, just so excited about these investments into our neighborhoods, and so thank you for all the hard work, to you, City Manager, and of course, the staff as well, so thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
Nothing here, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. May I have a motion then to approve the City Manager's recommendations?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the City Manager's recommendation.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
It's been probably moved in second to approve the City Manager's recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay. Legislation, Ms. Blackshear?
First reading Emergency Resolution Number 6833-4, objecting to the issuance of liquor permit number 26312758925, Family Dollar Stores of Ohio LLC, doing business as Family Dollar, number 24898, 645 Troy Street. number 24898, 645 Troy Street, Dayton, Ohio, 45404, and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, resolution number 6833-24 being declared an emergency. I move for its immediate passage.
Second, Your Honor.
It's been properly moved and seconded to have resolution number 6833-24 as emergency. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Okay.
Second reading, emergency resolution number 6833-24, objecting to the issuance of liquor permit number 26312758925, Family Dollar Stores, Stores of Ohio LLC, doing business as Family Dollar number 24898, 645 Troy Street, Dayton, Ohio, 45404. Mayor Memes?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
Second reading, resolution number 6832-24, declaring the intention of the commission to vacate the alley east of the Dayton, Dayton-Kettering Connector from the north property line of parcel R72139030015 to Shorey Road. Mayor Memes?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. So, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
Two citizens have registered, and I would like to remind everyone of our three-minute time limit. I will call to the podium Darryl Wood. I'm sorry, David Wood.
Hello there, Mayor and City Committee.
Your name and address for the record.
My name is David Woods, address 3230 Lakeview Avenue in Dayton, Ohio.
You may begin.
Good morning.
Good morning. I was complaining because Kettering Main Campus Hospital killed my dad. Basically, Dr. Nixon gave him an infection because they had, he caught a bed sore at their hospital. He did the first time. My dad told him to stop. Then, he's about to get released to go to Trotwood dialysis. Next day, no, he did surgery again anyway without letting us know. Then, my dad got infection. They're gonna tell him my dad's gonna die. Affection's gonna spread in his body. Infection spread in his body so bad, it ripped his skin apart, it ripped his nuts, and he was burnt black like me. He's a light-skinned black man. He was a veteran at, he's a veteran of the Navy, and he's a preacher, and I take them on DA TV that's taking y'all now. And DA TV knows him. And he's got, his personality is more like Mr. Rogers and Santa Claus. He's a real nice guy. And then, we'll make it bad. I got the City Commission, I got Civil Rights Commission investigating Kettering Main Campus Hospital right now, and they are doing perjury alive because the male nurse, my dad had a seizure, is a pretty white woman chapman, and a white man chapman. And they, this, after they got a prayer for my dad, my dad had a seizure, he grabbed your arm, and the male nurse slapped my dad real hard like this in his face. And my dad was hollering, "Ah!" because he was having pain. His skin got ripped apart. They weren't giving him dialysis. They weren't giving him pain medication, nothing. And I was made paratary medical. I see it do a video because I got trespass. Then, he slapped his face real hard, choked his face like this, the male nurse, and then choked him right in the throat. And then, they cut the camera off real quick. The next day, my dad got critical, and then, they said, they said he got critical, and then a week later, he passed away. The hospital, because it got trespass, they didn't let me see his body. They let me go to the hospital. They had, the doctors and nurses have not notified me that my dad is dead to this day now. I know he's dead, but they have not notified me, not one doctor. They lied to the City Commission lady and told her that they notified me. They have not notified me. Captain Perez, head of security, has told me that he's dead when I called in, and then he was going to trust me to a nurse to let me know he's dead, but the nurse hung up on me. Then, I tried to talk to their patient relations people. They had police talk to me. So, I would like the Mayor and City Commission to go to the president of, the CEO of Kettering Hospital and make the doctors and nurses tell the civil rights lady and my lawyers, Kirk Smith from Medical Mile Practice, that my dad, to tell me that my dad is dead on this earth. He's not alive. And to, that male nurse choked my dad's face because there's a witness, a woman, a pretty white woman chapman, and a white man chapman worked for Kettering Hospital, that they could speak to the civil rights lady so she can do, finish her investigation. And I would like for y'all to make, I told the Kettering Police, Captain Perez, you know, about it. And I'd like them to arrest that male nurse who choked my dad's face and put him critical. And I'd like to know that he died when the male nurse choked him in the throat and got him critical, or was it infection that killed him? They have not notified me. I appreciate y'all's time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Thank you.
Kimaru Watenza?
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Kimaru Watenza, I live at 1,200 West Grand Avenue, Dayton, Ohio, 45402. And I'm here this morning to remind this commission of some things. In 1955, a young boy named Emmett Till was visiting his family in Mississippi, and a white woman lied and said he whistled at her, and he was brutally murdered. In 1963, the 16th Street Baptist Church in Birmingham, Alabama was bombed, and four little girls were killed. In June of 1963, Medgar Evers, a civil rights worker who was, committed the atrocious sin of trying to get people registered to vote, Medgar Evers was killed in his own driveway in front of his children. In 1976, the South African government killed hundreds of children in Soweto because they were protesting, they're being forced to be educated in, in Afrikaans. Our president, well, there were people in South Africa like Nelson Mandela who were protesting things like this, and our president called him a terrorist. Ronald Reagan was the president then. And he did call Nelson Mandela and people like him terrorists. So, I, I wanted to mention those things to remind you that these kinds of things are happening as we speak, and much worse, in Gaza, on the West Bank, and in Lebanon, by the apartheid government of Israel. And it is beyond me, my understanding, why this commission has not divested all economic interest in Israel and all cultural ties in Israel. Those, the kind of crimes that are being committed as we speak cannot be supported. And yet, our government is sending our tax dollars so that they can bomb women, children, old men. It is appalling what is being, what is happening, and I would ask that this commission divest itself in all, of all interest in Israel as a nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you for your comments.
And that is all, Your Honor.
Okay. Closing comments. Commissioner Turner-Sloss? Oh, sorry. Ms. Dixie?
At one time, I have some closing comments. Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to-
We'll have to wait up here, guys. Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to quickly update the commission to make sure that you are aware. You know, last week, we had a, a very unfortunate, violent attempted robbery downtown. And within five hours of the pictures getting picked up by our camera system downtown, the individuals were apprehended and arrested. And you all know that we have a pretty robust camera system downtown. There is more investment coming. And so, I just want to make sure that we are all clear that when, if someone chooses to do this kind of behavior downtown, because it is our economic engine for our entire city, you know, you will be seen. We will catch you. We will arrest you. We will prosecute you because we cannot tolerate this kind of unsafe behavior in our economic engine downtown. So, I just wanted to make sure that I updated you on that and that we were able to promote the great work of our Dayton police officers as well as the community with regards to the release of the pictures.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
I have one today. I would like to remind everyone of the work session immediately followed the meeting. We will be discussing the topic of access to counsel, and NCCJ will provide an update.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Turner-Sloss, closing comments?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Dixie, for your closing comments. I, I actually would like, if you could, provide us with a memo with the details of, of the incident itself and some more context. Thank you for highlighting the fact that our downtown is our economic engine and that we are not tolerating, nor will we excuse, any illicit behavior downtown or anywhere in the city of Dayton. So, again, I know we're making the necessary steps. You provided us with information, the additional cameras, the additional patrol. But again, I hope that we could find a means of making sure that we are addressing these issues all around and providing the necessary social services, providing the council, providing, again, not additionally the, the police patrol, but that there is other mechanisms that we are deploying and addressing these issues because we have an increasing unhoused population. Mental health is on the rise. We're seeing it every day throughout our downtown neighborhood as well as through our residential neighborhoods. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I look forward to the, the memo with the additional details. And I, I want, to your point, applaud and thank our services from our PD and all of our safety services. Thank you, Ms. Blackshear, for highlighting. I look forward to the work session this morning. And so, with that, I want to thank everyone who provided updates and presentations. I was looking forward to the demolition presentation, but I know I got one more week. So, next week, on the 30th, we should have the demolition presentation. Ms. Miranda Brooks, Commissioner Joseph, thank you for your leadership in the Bosnia Youth Leadership Program. Ms. Martin, thank you for being here, and I'm looking forward to the Fall Harvest Festival. So, kudos to the work of our Recreation and Youth Services Department. Mr. Tepper, thank you for being here. Mr. Woods, I would encourage you, sir, to have a conversation. It sounds like you are already in the process, but with your attorneys, I would encourage you to defer your complaints with the medical board, and I'm sorry that your family is experiencing what you have tested, provided us this morning with the information you provided. So, all the best to you. And I believe that's all I have. Oh, Mr. Watenza, excuse me, Mayor. Thank you for reminding us of the atrocities of the past as well as what we are experiencing today. So, it was good seeing you. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for your comments. Mr. Woods, I just want to express my sympathy for you and the loss of your father. I know that's a difficult journey to walk. I don't know if you contacted the coroner, but the coroner should be able to give you some information in terms of the death of your father, or the entity of record around a death. So, but it sounds like you have legal representation, and it sounds like that's gonna be a pain, a hard and painful process for you and your family. So, know that we're sympathetic to you and your family. Yeah. I want to thank everyone who came and spoke today and just lift up those events. We have the Pink Out on Friday night and the Harvest Party on Saturday, and early voting is available. And the best way to make sure you vote is to make your plan to vote, encourage people to vote early. I know I plan to vote early this year. The job I have can sometime take requirements of me that getting away for two hours on Tuesday could be hard. So, I'm gonna get out and vote early so that my vote is in. So, I encourage others to, to join me in voting early. And then, pulling locations open on the weekend too, this weekend. So, every opportunity to get out and get your vote in.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank both of you for your comments today. And Ms. Dixie, thank you for talking about the safety issues in downtown Dayton. But it just goes to show the increased cameras and technology that we have implemented downtown is having a positive effect. So, I just wanted to highlight that and to thank you for your comments on it. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
I want to echo all of my colleagues' comments. It's important to vote. It's important to get out there. Commissioner, thanks for bringing that up. It really is important. I want to footstomp that also. I want to also mention, as Commissioner Shaw did, how grateful we are for your work and your staff's work in arranging the fact that, arranging these cameras has been an easy road. We, as a city, as you know, we, we try to, to make sure that we have commission control, commission oversight, and that we're using these cameras in the right way. And I'm, I'm really happy with how we're threading the needle, and the proof is that we're catching folks who need to come out here. I'm, I'm really happy about that. I really appreciate the work that you and the police and everyone on staff has done. So, thank you very much.
Okay. I'd like to follow up just a bit on the camera situation as well because we had some challenges as we've gone through these processes over the past, past year or so, with sometimes citizens who are not understanding the, the value that those cameras offer for the city. The aspect of the balancing act, if you will, with communities and neighborhoods who want to be safe, and they want to make sure that if someone is committing a crime in those neighborhoods, they want the same type of commitment service that we're trying to provide downtown as well. And I just have to ask them to give us that permission for those cameras to be located in those spaces, and we'll be able to do more of that activity. And again, I think what we found, even when we find individuals as far away as Cleveland, which doesn't seem like it's that far, it's just about 200 miles or so, but individuals because of license plate readers who were involved in shooting, killing a pregnant lady here in the city of Dayton, and even though it was a couple of weeks before they were found, but they were actually found. And it's interesting that the network that the state has in terms of how they're using those cameras together and knowing that those individual police chiefs are talking to our police chief. And the governor has a chief himself that also helps to coordinate those activities. So, again, very much appreciated that those things are happening all around the state of Ohio and the Dayton's involved in that. Additionally, I'd like to congratulate the leaders of Bottom Line, ribbon-cutting involved with them to help steer more and more young people and preparing them to go to college. Very exciting opportunity for them. A big, big fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club this past week as well with the Spark Organization. And then, the Black Mill West Symposium to help get more and more companies of color to be involved in how they can advance their businesses that they're doing here in the city of Dayton. And then, to congratulate also the National Council of Negro Women on their 64th Annual Tea that was held this past, this past Sunday. And so, all these activities and more are happening throughout the city of Dayton for people who are trying to make Dayton the best place for people to live, work, and play. So, with that, love and peace for all, hatred for none. And, okay, I got another note here. 116th Annual Recruiting Class?
PD, the police recruit class.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Appreciate that. This morning?
No.
No, there was, what was it, last Friday?
Last Friday.
Last Friday. Okay.
The police.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Okay. Come before this commission? Do you have something else to add?
Well, at the graduation, one of the police officers who graduated after our police reform lifting the age, a 60-year-old recruit graduated from the police academy. It was the first police recruit over 44 years. So, he pushed that, that limit.
Pushed envelope.
Yeah. So, and hope for me, soon here at 58. So, you know, who know what you can do at 60.
Got time. So, I think I missed that time by myself. But, thank you so much. So, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.